Welcome. Mr. Burke, can you call the role of the establishment forum?
Speaker here. Mr. Jernerbro, here. Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coth.
Present.
Spalstrini, here. And Mr. Robinson.
Present.
Okay, please rise if you're able to pledge your leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Okay. To the unanimous liens.
No speakers this evening.
All speakers. Okay. Next, you have, we'll have the meeting minutes from August 6th. Please review them for any additional solutions and or corrections. I know that we moved the agenda all over the place, so thank you in advance, Mr. Stuler, for keeping track of all of that. And I did read it in the minutes. It is kind of hard to keep up with, but it was because of the flow of the meeting, not because of the minute taken.
Two changes. On page four, when we went into executive session, we should have the exception to the Open Meetings Act included in there as to why we went in. It was said during the meeting.
Yeah, there's no armor doing that. I mean, it's C1. It's two C1s, five ILCS, 122 C1.
Because otherwise.
I'm right.
Doesn't say why, so that's just ahead of hand. And then on page nine, when trustee Kelly gave his report in number 14, just at BBC meeting, because otherwise his next meeting will be August 13th.
Any other changes to the minutes? I think we'll should approve the minutes with the changes recommended by trustee Paul Strine.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Law in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Okay, so we don't have Mr. Hedges here today. He's still recovering. So with that, I just would like to introduce Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Viselli, and Mr. Khan. So good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Like I would normally do to Mr. Hedges. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Lyons. Oh, I should say good evening to Mr. Pan as well, or she may be the only one that's there. So, Ms. Lyons, can you help us out with the audit report, please?
I certainly can. You should have received your audit report via email and then online with us this evening. We have Monica Adamski. She is... Monica, are you a manager?
I'm a principal. Can you hear me?
An audit principal. Even better. With Lotterback and Heyman are auditing her. So she's going to take over from here. You have at your desk both a copy of the audit report and a management letter.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to present remotely this evening. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the 2024 audit. Just wanted to start off by saying thanks to Lori and her team. An audit does require a great deal of additional time and burden placed on everybody. So it was really nice to get all of our requests in a timely manner and get this one wrapped up. And we're going to be starting the next one here shortly. So in front of you, you have the audit report. On page one of that is the independent auditor's report. This letter states that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then it's our responsibility as your auditors to generate an opinion on the financial statements. So I'm happy to report that the village did receive an unmodified opinion this year. That is the cleanest form of opinion and the highest level of assurance that we can give. That means that your financial statements are free of material misstatements and there's sound internal controls over your financial reporting. Next in the audit, on page, starting page eight, is your management discussion and analysis. This is a very great narrative summary of the fiscal year's financial highlights. We do know that the financial statements can be quite difficult to read, so we always suggest the board read this at their leisure. Again, on page eight, it summarizes the financials highlights, specifically noting that the village's governmental net position increased by 4.9 million, which is 15%. On page 29, are your fund level financial, fund level governmental funds, so ultimately what the village budgets for on an annual basis. So you'll see about halfway down the page, there's a line that says excess or deficiencies of revenues over or under expenditure. So again, that's ultimately the operating income for each respective fund. So you'll see the general fund had a net income of about 564,000, fiscal year-end fund balance of 3.4 million. And then going to the right, you'll see the same thing for all the major funds. Capital projects, transportation impact fees had a positive change of 338,000, ending fund balance of about 1.7. And again, you'll see that towards the right for all of your major funds. Then on page 35, you'll see the same information for your enterprise funds, which are your water sewer and garbage. So again, water sewer fund had a change in that position of about $946,000 with an ending fund balance of 48 million. Any questions on those numbers? Okay. On page 38, you'll see the same type of information, but for the pension fund. So the ending fund balance for the pension fund is 4.5 million. That's a positive change of $658,000 from the prior fiscal year. And following all those numbers are your notes to the financials. There you'll see more detail about capital assets, long-term debt, investment schedules. But I won't go through that. I will just briefly still highlight on page 81 is your IMRF. So the IMRF pension is funded at about 107%. And on page 83, you'll find the same information for police pension, which is at about 49%. And then after this, starting on page 85, is your budget to actual reporting. Then you could, there you'll see every line item that the village budgets for and then what the actual was within the fiscal year. And lastly, what Lori mentioned was the management letter. So ultimately, this is any recommendations we would like to present to the board. We do have no new comments this year. We do have a few that were repeated. And we do also note in their upcoming GASB standards that we will work with Lori to get implemented when they are required. Any questions for me?
I don't have any board. Do you guys have any questions? I appreciate all your time and effort and for attending remotely this evening.
Thank you for having me. Have a great rest of your evening, everybody.
Ms. Lyons, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I do not.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2024 annual audit. Questions, comments? Ms. Burke, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Jernerbro. Aye. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Spalstrini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Speaker.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have an amendment to a lease agreement that's been in place for some time. I believe it's been in place for a lot longer than the Verizon wireless lease has been. I think it's been on the, we've had cellular equipment on that tower probably since the tower was built-ish. And so Verizon would like to add some equipment to the tower. And so therefore, the rent will be going up to the tune of about $24,000 is it a year, correct, for the rent? So it's just an addendum to the lease, adding for additional equipment on the top.
What are they paying now?
So they, they signed their original lease. I understand. And I don't know the most of the history on this. They signed their original lease several years ago, but never actually located any equipment on the tower. And so this is the first time they're actually going to have antennas on the Elster Tower.
What was the original lease sum?
It was zero. They were not, they were not paid because they never actually, what do you want to say, activated it.
Well, that answers my question about where in the budget does that count as income? That's one.
We had 24,000 we didn't have last year.
Yes, for this one. One other thing is, in the analysis, it says the lease agreement will go into effect July 1st of 2025.
Right.
But, okay, the agreement says 26. Okay.
Right.
That's all. I just want to make sure we weren't going to backdate her. So is it 26 or 25?
26.
It is.
The lease will go into effect 26.
26. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Does the lease give them sole usage, or can it be multi-unit located up there?
So we always evaluate, always evaluate the structural integrity of, you know, the number of antennas and those types of things that they, that are required when they go through the end share interview to make sure that the structure can hold any additional equipment. But it's not, T-Mobile used to be up there. They have withdrawn their equipment. And so, you know, there's, there's space for multiple.
Providers throughout the community and different towers, like the Maxx Valley Internet, and then you're clear with.
Ever, Everstream.
Everstream, I'm sorry, is the name of the company. And then we, we've had different agreements on different towers for AT&amp;T and stuff. So it's fairly common.
There's some Kane kind of up on the tower.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, we've got towers out at Lakewood and other places. My question was more of, does this lease reserve that tower just for Verizon or can T-Mobile come in and can?
Well.
Cellular be company, whoever it may be.
As long as the structural, as long as the tower and the equipment that's in, you know, like the, what do you call those things?
The rings up at the top?
Yes, those things. As long as they will handle the weight and, I don't know, the air currents and all that, it does not give them sole possession of this tower.
All right. Yes, typically they have equipment on the top, and then there's cabling run down, and then there's a cabinet at the base of the tower. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, approving an ordinance to the amendment, the lease with Verizon Marius.
So move.
Second. Questions, comments? Rock, roll, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Spalstrini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
So I believe we talked about this at one of our April meetings. And so now it's coming back to us. I believe it was April. Mr. Montgomery is here today to talk about the expenditure of the amount of $15,111 or $114, rather. We have one home in the village that has, it's lead on both sides, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so this is the first of a few of these that we're going to have to do, as we've talked about this with the board. First step was evaluating and getting the numbers and that kind of stuff. And I know, I know that trustee Jernerbro was new, but the code was updated in 1985 for the village that said that you can't use lead service lines anymore. So it made our job easy when the state required us to go around and do surveys and that kind of stuff. So basically, if your house was built before 1985, there were surveys that were done and postcards that were sent out and that kind of stuff. And so this one was identified as one of the priority homes to be replaced. And so that's why it's before you this evening. Do you have any questions? Do you want to add any color to this, Mr. Montgomery?
Yeah, we, as you may recall, we have 17 known lead service lines in town. Starting in 2027, we have to start replacing them at a rate of two a year. Meanwhile, we have to do lead sampling every six months. Many of you are involved in that. We had 40 sites that we were required to do based on our population. The 17 that were known lead were required to be part of that. There's one home, one site that vastly exceeded the maximum contaminant level. And I'm here today to ask you if we can replace it.
Those 17 homes that's lead on both sides?
It varies.
Or were?
Yeah. If there's lead anywhere, it's going to be removed. So it varies.
But for whatever reason, this one's pretty high.
This looks very high. It's a unique property in that the service line is very long. It goes on to another block through the backyards. It was put in in 1945. And there's an elderly gentleman that lives there that I doubt uses much water. So the water sits there very stagnant. So when we get ahold of it, it's quite high in lead. So I have to write a report to the EPA after we view these rounds of sampling and give them an action plan. And my action plan is simply, we're going to replace it. I didn't tell them when. But this gentleman will be on top of the list when we start because it's really high.
Question for you. If, and I'm not saying this homeowner would, would do this, in the case where you have lead this high, and it's known, if a homeowner was to refuse to allow the village to replace the service lines, is it, does the EPA and the village allow them to continue to have water service knowing the lead is that high? Or what happens in those situations?
Waiver that they can sign. It says that they refuse.
But I guess for me, we've talked about this topic for a long time. This isn't about the one house. I think this is the first of the 17. And whatever, my opinion, my personal opinion is whatever we decide on this one should be the same for all 17. You can't treat one home differently than others. This just has to be the first because of how high it is. But I think we're setting the precedent with whatever that vote is, wherever it may land, regardless of this, we have a price for this one. And I do have one question about that. But whatever the rest of the prices are, we've kind of set this precedent, right? Whatever the decision may be. The question I have on the price is, in the agenda supplement at the bottom, it states that it's an amount not to exceed $20,358, but in the agenda says 15,000. Which price point are we?
It's the 20,000 because the 15 is the actual replacement of the line. The additional five is for the removal of the lead line.
We've got to go on the other block and locate it. Once we have replaced the line, they're going to crimp the lead line and then hooky, locating equipment up to it and try to trace it back to the, the main on Grove Street, and then dig down and remove it from our system.
Okay, so it is the full 20,500. Okay.
The actual replacement is 15. There's an additional five to get the lead line off of Grove Street main.
Okay, so the, the ask from staff is a motion for the 20,500, sorry, $20,358.
Yes. So and this is just the stark portion of this. We'll have some restoration expenses as well, just.
What do you mean by this?
Well, when we dig up the ground.
I mean, they will directional bore the new lines, but who knows what's going to happen when they have to dig out the old ones.
And they're going to have to dig out the B-box and stuff like that. So we're going to have to do some side restoration and stuff in Chris's yard and that kind of stuff.
I just was curious. Okay. It's not like we're replacing road or sidewalk or?
No, but that's the same thing as like, we have a, the guys do it, or we have a contractor that does it. Because, I mean, like if we are redoing like fire hydrant or something like that, or need restoration, or like a plow rip, somebody shared that kind of thing.
Okay.
I have just a couple of comments. Is, is the precedent in that sticks with me here a little bit. I understand this is extremely high. It's six times what the legal, so no problems doing that. What is the date for the year that we're supposed to start replacing?
2027.
2027. So we're doing this like two years ahead of time to be able to take care of this person. And I wholeheartedly support that in there. But the fact that we're doing it now is because it's six times the amount. The other ones are significantly less. And although, I mean, the, and that's why I have a problem with the word precedent, because we're doing it, but it's because of the significance of the amount, not just because of its lead. And so some of the thoughts that I had is maybe to do some kind of amortization by years. If, if we are going to put this on two a year, and you're going to go down for, you know, till we get through, through the 17, and just using the 20,000 amount, it's not a lot of money. It's 346,000, 347,000. Okay, so it's not much. It's a lot of money, don't get me wrong. But that's at today's amounts, and this is going to go up. As we put this calendar together or schedule, my thought would be, for those homeowners that want theirs done sooner, maybe that there's something that we could put in there where they pay part of it. Because otherwise, we're going to be doing it randomly, or however you're going to choose to do it. But if they want theirs done sooner, and we're only doing two a year, and we end up doing more, that they would pay some kind of amount towards it so that they can move up higher on this.
Nothing prevents them from doing it on their own.
Yeah.
They're in a real hurry to do it.
Right. So, but, but we don't have the money to be able to do it all at once. And we're going to schedule this in there. So, and that's why when it comes to, you know, yes, it's a precedent, but it's, I have trouble with that word because we wouldn't be doing this right now except for the fact that this is so egregious of an amount, six times, and for the safety of that particular person. So we're not doing any of the other ones right now. We're jumping onto it. And so that's why I don't want to say we are absolutely going to be doing all of them moving forward, because you're also tying other boards that may not agree with that. So I'm just throwing that out there for thoughts.
Are two things. One, the rest of the houses that have the lead, they don't have the length involved with this.
No.
They're significantly shorter.
Right.
So there's not going to be a whole lot of directional boring. It's mainly going to be a little backward. It takes them up.
It'll all be directional.
Okay. Well, the price is gonna, is not going to jump that significant, because this one is really long, and all the rest are short.
The only thing that's long is the one that we're going to be abandoning. The actual one we're putting in there is pretty standard. It's going out the front to a main that's there.
You're not going to re-sign it. You're going to go to a different main.
Yeah, it's going to go to the South Street main out front instead of through the backyards to another block. So it's, this one's pretty typical of what we'll see. So they should all be around 15,000, give or take.
So I have a question. So as we talk about what's next, there's some assumptions made up that we were only going to start with this one and, and stuff. And so the thought, question that I have is, are we going to start looking at these and chipping off a little bit each time? I know that what the requirement is, but as funds allow, would you potentially come back to us and say, maybe we'll do this one and this one?
I would like to.
Yeah. So this year, we're not only, we're not only sticking to the two a year deal if we have the funds available, of course.
So Mark and I are going to discuss this. And, and the agenda supplement speaks to it a little bit, the fact that we do plan on prioritizing these. It doesn't make sense, obviously, if there's seven people like neighbors.
Correct.
You're not going to do two a year. So we're going to, we're, we're going to work figuring that all out.
What's more is we have EEI looking at it right now, because we have two neighborhoods that are, have a lot of lead on two streets. And we're doing a study as to what would it take to do a holistic rebuild of the street, main, drinking water, sanitary, storm, or do we want to just go back to a 100-year-old four-inch main?
Sure. Which we shouldn't be doing anyway.
So we're studying that right now, and we'll have numbers for you to look at.
So Budget Committee, stay tuned for more.
Well, and there were numbers proposed prior to the EEI study, starting when we discussed this a couple of months ago, where it was, could be one, like option A could be this amount, option B, it was the cheap way, the right way, which way do we want to do it? And we'll know the actual numbers when EEI comes back. I think the history since I've been on the board, and State Street being one of them, is we tend to want, and we have as a village done it the right way in the past, even when it means we have to give up other things we wanted to have done. I think the beautification project was a lot of them. For me, it's, when I look at our job, we provide protection with police, we provide clean drinking water, sewer, trash, our basic things that a village needs to provide. We know this house has unsafe drinking water, severely unsafe drinking water. We know these other houses have lead service lines. And from the numbers, some of them are not over the threshold, but they're still a little lead indicated in their water. There were some, and some lead service lines didn't have any lead indicated in the water, right? I think there were like minuscule numbers from your report.
Yeah.
If I remember right. But it's still, I, I feel, our, our job as a village to provide that clean, safe drinking water. And so I think the budgetary question comes to the point of how and when can we get this done, not the if we should do this. For me, the precedent is when we, when, when the board decides on this one, whatever it's going to do, that same treatment happens for the other homes, should happen for the other homes. We'd have to vote on that, too. Timing wise, I don't know what the timing would be, but I would just, that's my, my, my own personal opinion. I don't want to speak for, or, or towards anyone or representative board in any way. But that's just my personal opinion.
And I completely agree. And I think timing wise, it should be how and when it should be how quickly.
Yes.
Get this done, because any lead in your water is unsafe. So I, I think they should be done as quickly as we can. I don't think we need to put it off until we are required to do it. I think if we can do it, we should do it as, as soon as possible. So. But to, to staff's point, do it the right way, but done correctly. So come up with a plan as far as like a street or a neighborhood or whatever, whatever seems to make sense to, as much as we, that's why we did unfortunately raise the water rates and that kind of stuff to account for some of the capital improvements. And this is in the plan, regardless of whether or not the state says we have to. It was the right thing.
I don't remember budgeting for the replacement. I know we've been talking about this for several years, but as, as the math, three, three, 346,100 is what the amount is to replace them all at this amount. Do we have that in the budget at all?
So we, we have money in the budget for lead service line engineering and replacement this year. And this will be, so this is covered. We do not, that those future replacements will have to be put in the actual budget. They are in the capital budget at this time.
Okay.
So if we go with the number provided, 15-ish, 20 to 25, that would be about 100,000 less. Only be at about 260. I hate to say only, but.
Because this one was 20,000.
This one was significantly higher.
Correct.
It was an extra 5,000 because we had to go on and go another main.
That'd be fair, though. We don't know yet, because as Mr. Montgomery was saying, the right way may end up meaning tear up a street, replace a water main. It may not be a couple hundred thousand dollar project.
Right.
Instead of doing five homes on the street, you're doing 15 homes.
Right. Because you're putting a whole new water main.
Right. And this, the positive is, is, you know, we don't have a whole lot of answers right now. The staff is out, is diligently working to have the answers, right? But this starts the conversation and gives, brings it in front of the board, so it's a constant talking.
But to trustee Paul Strini's question, it's, this house would be covered in this year's budget, is budgeted for, and anything above and beyond would have to be considered in future budget, especially.
And the, and the engineering, et cetera, and all this, that's all paid for by the state.
May I ask, how much lead is safe?
The EPA sets a level of 15 parts per billion.
And is the 17 the number of homes that were tested that were above that?
They, only the one was above it on that round.
Okay.
In the second round, we got one more home that went slightly over the 15, but not to the extent of this home we're talking about. So.
Okay.
With further testing in that, we may, that home's rising up the list.
So we're.
So it's fluid. They all have lead lines, so.
Right. Yeah. But we will be able to prioritize based on need and what we have available.
Because here, you said six months. Every six months, those lines have to be tested?
January to June, and then July to December. So I'm in the middle of my second six-month period.
And that's for, that led throughout the?
There's, there's 40 sites. The 17 lead ones have to be included.
Have to be included in that one.
Okay. The rest were just random, and I got a lot of you to participate. Okay, the rest were just random and I got a lot of you to participate.
Are we a hundred percent certain at this point in the, in the exercise that we have identified every single lead line that is the identified?
We've done a heck of a job.
I know you guys have, yes.
So I'm not gonna say there's absolutely none out there, but we aren't aware of.
Okay, so we are as a, pretty much aware as we can possibly be with every single lead line in this village.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank for the board too. Uh, I had pulled it up cuz it was in yesterday's paper and I couldn't remember the village. Uh, West Dundee just passed that they're gonna charge the residents five thousand out of whatever the cost is per home to replace it because they got denied a no-interest loan to be able to replace. Now they have way more than we know.
But did it, in the first two rounds, the village picked up a big portion of their bills?
That's, yes. And so, well, I, I'm only raising this to say West Dundee just got declined for a zero-interest loan, so if you're going into this. Um, I don't know that we should count on we're gonna get grants or loans or anything.
I agree, and, and, but West Dundee also purchased a big chunk of Springfield Mall just recently.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, this is, they're tapped towards West Dundee, I'm just tapped. We also don't qualify for a lot of grants.
No.
So.
But trustee Coles' point, they, they've already started their replacement program before we have, like this would be the starting of our recruitment, yeah. And they've already, I, I don't know how many homes they cover, but I would bet that it's probably the number of homes that we have.
They have four hundred and thirty they have to replace, according to the newspaper.
Elgin's in the same boat, some of the older communities are in, in like, I know that like Geneva has got some, I know.
Every village does, like, every village does, so.
All right, any other questions?
Just real quick, do we have any other quotes? I mean, it was just the one trenching, that's, I can't think of his name.
Starkinson?
Starkinson. Was there any other ones that you looked at?
They attempted to, and people refused to come out and do a one-off. They want a project. So we have this wonderful contractor here in town that works with us and they're a partner of ours, start. And they'll come and do a one-off at a very reasonable price.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they have a really great relationship with the village.
Okay, because they're in the village, they're local.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Absolutely.
And I'd just like to echo trustee Kelly's, um, statement that this is our responsibility. It is, so the future boards agree or not, I mean, it is legally our responsibility, not just morally and ethically. So we will have to find a way. So if it means that we don't award as many grants or something, then we don't. But we're gonna have to prioritize health and safety because this is our responsibility. So I am at work with, this is us.
I'll entertain a motion approving the expenditure for lead service line replacement. I would like to just say in the corrected amount, not to exceed twenty thousand, five, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second, third. Uh, Ms. Curry, call roll please.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Spelstrini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Spoder.
Aye.
Ms. Jettabro.
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Washington has six.
And now we're in the middle of our, of, of the water talk section of our agenda. Mr. Montgomery, can you help us with the next agenda item for well habil, well thirteen rehabilitation?
Plan in our CIP to rehab well thirteen. It's long overdue. Uh, I've always considered thirteen the crown jewel of our water system, but the water is fantastic out of that well when the well works. Uh, we, uh, plan to have it, uh, pulled in the wintertime when the demand was less than it is right now, but on, uh, June twenty-sixth, uh, it took a hit. So it's, it's not functioning right now. Um, we had a good eight-week period because, uh, whatever hit that station took out a lot of the, uh, took out some electrical components and we were waiting on, uh, the parts to come in. And those got replaced and the well would not start up, so we believe that the motor winding is probably shorted and needs to be rewound. So this is a proposal to have EEI, uh, put together a bid package and get the ball rolling on, on that instead of waiting till the wintertime.
Where is well thirteen located? Is that over at Harmony?
It's over at the street garage marshalling yard, over by the train tracks there.
Oh.
On Click Street.
Yes.
Do we usually, do we usually use the same contractor to do all of our pump repairs? Was that Lane Western?
Uh, Lane, and, uh, there was another one that we use, municipal well and pump.
And, and the reason I ask that is, is what does EEI charge us to set out a bid package? Would it be, uh, uh, better for us to contact those two and get prices rather than send it out for bid? And no offense EEI, but if we're gonna pay them twenty-five Gs to put together a bid package, even pick the phone up for thirty-nine cents, call either one of them and get a price and save some money.
There's a lot involved. This one is so important that I wouldn't, if I was you, I wouldn't want me picking up the phone. I'd want EEI picking up the phone.
Okay.
Somebody from EEI is here. How are you? Um, I just wanna give some context to that. It's a really good question, obviously. Um, if you don't have to spend money on things, you don't, uh, you don't need to spend money on them. Uh, in this case, there is a lot of nuance with well rehabilitation projects, more than you would think with contractors and the way that they approach their bids. And what's putting a project manual together does is make sure that the contractors are all bidding on the same project. And so you're not getting different qualifications and different submittals that you have to wade through and trying to figure out what value you're getting from each of the contractors that's submitting the bid. So this puts it all in the level playing field. They're all filling out the same bid schedule. Um, and you're able to evaluate them and make a educated decision. And really, you're going to get three bids on this. There's three well contractors in the area who do work on projects like this. It's Lane, Waterwell Solutions and Municipal Well and Pump. They're all equally qualified, uh, to do the work. Uh, but they all have different approaches if left to their own devices, so. Um, we have found that a project manual with the contract documents, with the specifications, with the bid schedule is a really advantageous way for a community to make sure they're getting the best value, competitive pricing, and they're all looking at it the same way.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? I'll entertain a resolution approving a professional services agreement with EEI for well thirteen re, uh, rehabilitation and design. So.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Curry, go roll please.
Mr. Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Spoder.
Aye.
Ms. Jettabro.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Washington has six.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison.
Thank you. You want me to stick around for anything, rest of the agenda here? I'd be happy to if needed.
I don't, does anybody, well, I guess, I guess this is early, but does anybody have any questions about the EEI portion of the accounts payable? That would be the only thing, cuz there's nothing else engineering related or the streets report. Because we will just, okay, all right, then, then you are excused, sir.
All right, thank you. My wife, wife will appreciate that. Have a good night. Take care.
Bye-bye.
And, uh, Mark, that's what I was just gonna say, and then she distracted me. Mark, you can go if you want. You don't need to get around. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay, but it's almost eight o'clock.
Village manager. Filling the seed, so.
Oh, my goodness, don't do that to me.
All right, next we just have a progress payment, you know, in a small marginal amount to land for the public works facility. Um, state standard, uh, operating for a project of this. Does anyone have, wanna have any questions about the payment or the project?
Are they billing us monthly?
Yes.
Is that what this is? So this is for one month worth of work?
Yes.
It's a big bill to swallow, right?
Yeah, amounts have been doubling, so I'm looking at three million next month.
The bonds that we have though, that, that's gonna be up some time before we have hearings and everything before that's.
Yep, we're moving right along though. I mean, we have a, we have a big schedule of, um, timelines to, to meet, to get that done and.
Our letter of credit then is for how much with the bank says?
Five.
Okay, so, and you expect three next month?
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
Wait, one point two, one point one.
Um, we actually, so about seven hundred and some thousand dollars was paid, uh, pre line of credit, like from last year when we, part of the fourteen million-dollar guaranteed minimum price is the, or maximum price. Um, included a lot of the Kluber and, um, architectural things that we paid for, um, out of our reserves or, you know, like budgeted reserves, but, so that's not it against the, the line of credit, yes, if that makes sense. Can't take five minus three point eight.
Hey, any other questions?
Is the project still on, on time, on track?
Yeah, I've been getting calls for inspections, like pretty much every other day. They're working on the rough, um, uh, I'm sorry, underground utilities or electric, uh, HVAC plumbing, all that, that was passed. Uh, tomorrow they have the rough, the rough electric for the generator and some more underground plumbing, I think, for the office area. So I've been getting calls for inspections like every other day.
January completion?
What's that?
January completion. Looking good.
Um, I'll approve, our, I'll entertain a motion to approve a progress payment to land. Same move. Questions, comments? Ms. Curry, can you go roll please?
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Spoder.
Aye.
Ms. Jettabro.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
And Spelstrini.
Aye.
So this has kinda been one of these things that we've done throughout, you know, the last few years where we've been trying to go through and see where we have goals and current regulations and, and that kinda thing and try to clean them up. And so Mo and Karen and, um, I'm sure Lori and Legal have really been going through the COE book and stuff as we find based on whether it be resident feedback or different situations that come up and we look at the book and go, wait a minute, this was in here the whole time? You know, or, or why, this doesn't make sense anymore. It's kinda one of those conversations that we continually have about the book being written in nineteen eighty-five and then just kinda left there to rot. And now in practice, this stuff doesn't buy enough. So before you, you have some business regulation changes, um, to our, to our municipal code, uh, their, their text amendment uh, things and, you know, the one of them is, is business licenses. We don't practice nor have the authority to enforce business licensing because we're not a whole community, but yet it's listed in our COE book. Uh, this kinda clarifies, it cleans up the language as far as when certain licenses and registrations are valid from because they were kinda all over the board, so it's really kinda set it uh, standardized so that we know when to go after people when licensing isn't up to date and that kinda stuff. Um, and, um, this also removes fees and license registration for, for different things. I believe the raffle license is an example, right? This, this eliminates the raffle license. We, by practice, have required raffle licenses for some things, but there's a lot of raffles that go on in town, like at the schools, fifty-fifties, different things that don't, we don't really enforce it, nor do they technically every time that there's a raffle at the school, for whatever reason, if it's within the village boundaries, they're supposed to have a raffle license. We've never enforced it, but yet if somebody were to come to a community-wide one like the Lions Club or the, like the uh, gum raffle that, uh, Sportsman Club does, or the Snowmobile Club does a raffle every year for Snowmobile, that kinda thing, then we, then they come and they fill out paperwork and we take it. It used to be that it used to have to come before the board to get voted on the raffle licenses. And when, when we got, we got here, we were like, why, why can't just staff sign it? There was no requirement for it to come to the board. That's just what past practice was. And it made it for a much longer approval process, so. That's the longest tournament. Mo, if you wanted to add some color to this, you absolutely could.
Yeah, just the one thing about the, the fees, we, now, there's some things that were eliminated, like raffle, carnival license, all that stuff, we're eliminating those entire, or proposing to eliminate those entirely. Um, similar to like the building permit fee schedule where you adopt that yearly, we're gonna take the fees and create a fee schedule for licenses and registration and then bring that back to the board for adoption yearly. Um, some of them will change, like the video gaming license is statutory, max two fifty. But other things that we think needs to change to cover staff time, we'll bring that on an annual basis for your review and approval, uh, rather than having, cuz right now someone you know, some are in the code and some are in the fee schedule, so we're just trying to.
Like the chicken licenses and the golf cart permits and like all of those things, and they're all in a different timeline, so this would standardize everything and make it easier administration.
The timeline will either be calendar or fiscal, uh, depending on what it is and how state law reads it. So we can't make everything fiscal or calendar. There's gonna be some that will be all different, but it's gonna be one of the two, so it's about August first to July thirty-first.
I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know we had carnival licenses. I, I don't think that we've ever gone to Coon Creek and said, hey, you need to pay your carnival license. They just, we just have never enforced it, so, but it's been there the whole time. So, anyway, I'll open up to the board for questions, comments, concerns.
I totally agree about fee schedule, hundred percent on board. Um, just a, a couple of things with the raffle licenses, I kinda looked around a little bit. And Kane County says a license is to be obtained from the city or village where the prize is to be awarded. And that is an ordinance for Kane County. So they're saying it has to come from us. There's also, also then, um, the option, and I, I saw somewhere and I can't remember, I was flipping around my, that night, that the village can designate Kane County as the issuing authority. Um, because with, with raffle license gambling, it, and that's, that's why it's the, um, Department of Revenue, some of the paperwork goes through them. Um, if you're doing it for like a, uh, connected with a campaign that has to go through the state board of elections and there's license, there's paperwork that has to be done and you have to submit who won it, copies of things, people signed, I mean, so it's, cuz it's gambling, that's why. Um, so I'm just a, a little concerned about removing that one. I don't want all the paperwork and all the stuff, so when I saw the option that the village can designate Kane County as the issuing authority, I thought it might be worth looking into that a little bit more before we just delete the whole thing.
Yeah, we'll definitely convert with legal before we present formal text amendments in our, our way, because Lori just knows everything.
My, my past experience is, if you let the county in, they're not leaving. They're not gonna leave. They're gonna pull around more and more.
Well, they also said you have to have, it, they, they're sending them back to the city or the village where the prize is to be awarded, and that's where you're supposed to get the license. And that is a county ordinance, so. That's already there.
Yes, but you wanna, yes.
I only know this because of trying to get a raffle license, you know, you have to be a not-for-profit, there's very specific requirements. And the state, like, it's the raffle and what do you call those, like, something runs, what do they call it?
Ah.
Something runs. It's the raffle and something runs act within the state of Illinois and it puts it back on the municipality, so I don't, I don't know that we can get rid of that.
Poker runs.
Pork, poker runs. There you go.
Yeah.
Poker runs. I think that's in the ordinance for the county. I think so.
So what you're saying is we have to have that one?
I think we have to have that one. And we probably, yeah, should. Enforce the raffles at school.
So how about this, how about we, because there's some concern about whether we can or whether we can't, why don't I entertain a motion to table this so that legal and every, we can get it together? And we'll take a look at it, but as far as, as far as the discussion purposes before we, we table, general feeling for the board, from the boards, you, are you guys good with the proposed changes?
Uh-huh, I'm in favor of cleaning it out. Yeah.
Correctly.
Aye.
Sure, but, and there are some in here, like, because we haven't enforced it to get rid of it, seems odd to me, like the carnival one, there's some really good language that protects the village.
Insurance.
Uh, whether it's the insurance waiver, whether it's you can't chill your, your people and uh, not saying that the carnivals would do that, but I mean, we, we've, and this isn't towards Coon Creek itself, this is towards anybody that does one, right? The circus, whoever it may be. So there, there's, there's just language in here that seems to be in there to protect the village.
Well, so staff had, uh, brought that part up, like when you talk about the carnival and stuff as an example, they have to go through a large group gathering plan to, uh, and there's, there's paperwork and stuff that's adopted via ordinance for that. to uh and there's, there's paperwork and stuff that's adopted via ordinance for that as well, so. Um, you know, when they, if there was going to be a festival of any kind and that kind of stuff, they have to provide proof of insurance and all that kind of stuff. Depending, especially like if they're on our property and that kind of thing. I don't know that I I share the same concern about the language and the ordinance for the car, for the carnival because we have the large outdoor gatherings, but if that's a concern of yours or the board.
Um, I know on Coon Creek's insurance policy, the village is listed, yeah.
Uh, anyway.
I think any of the large gathering, you have to be listed as an official party.
Just two, one, there's no need to table this, this is going back because this is just for discussion. It's just, we do the ideas to come out, how we want to. Whether we want to eliminate something or delegate it to the county or work in concert or adopt the county's regulations, oftentimes. It was regards to the carnivals, the one thing I will say from a policy perspective, which I don't know, um I had a client that actually had a child ejected from a carnival ride and I don't want to say ironically because it's not really a good public uh use of the word, but because we did not regulate it, it was solely regulated by the State Department of the Office of Fire Marshal. It really, we were not involved in any litigation because there are no codes that we did not follow in ensuring that the carnival was safe. So I am not, I am not, whatever policy decision, we will write it, it will be the greatest ordinance on carnivals, you'll obviously the best, it's a big, beautiful ordinance. And the, but the, the fact of the matter is, there was a policy decision that sometimes you don't dive into the field of regulation and you just stay out of it because if stuff comes up, you get, you kind of pop for that. Like you walk into, remember what somebody said about the county, same type of thing, like you walk into that field, sometimes you get uh, you get, I don't want to say in trouble, but it becomes an issue where liability risk has increased.
So let me ask you a question on that then.
Yeah.
Whether it's the circus that came to town or the the Coon Creek Days Carnival and Festival, right? Who goes on site to certify that they are within whatever regulations they are within? Because like you had said, the state fire marshal.
Sure.
Is there somebody that goes through and does safety checks and signs off that they are
Yeah.
legal to go through this?
There is, there is.
Our fire department.
Fire department.
Our fire department went to every single ride and every single apparatus on that ride and inspected every one of them.
Okay, so then they become the authority to verify they are good to go?
They become the regulatory body and then if it's a massive issue of criminality, they're selling drugs out, not that it, this would never happen at a carnival, but they're selling drugs out of the back of the clown water gun thing, then the chief would give the, right, so.
Yeah, that was very small city.
So again, I am not advocating one policy decision, that's this body's obligation, but I would be remiss not to mention my own experiences. And, you know, we were very worried about the child he got injected, obviously. And, yeah, and that's it. I will stop there and that's, I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
So can you, can we, can staff hit with Legal and verify what we're allowed to do or what we're not allowed?
Legal would love to work with staff on this issue.
Particularly, I mean, Mr. Sully, if you could see that we've got the large group
Sure.
thing, and if though there's, if we need to add something to the large group that will cover the carnival stuff so we don't have to have a big ordinance, that would be great.
I just don't want, like, I I agree with that a hundred percent. I just don't want to get into this, like, right in the, right now, the current ordinances is listed that we should be issuing licenses. So the fact that we're not doing it, in the instance that you brought up about the kid being ejected, if we were negligent and not following our own ordinances, right, like, that's also
That's the first thing we did. We went through and we checked the, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The first thing we did is we went through and we checked the code relative to what carnival regulations there were and what we did do and kind of stepping into much, right? And we did it. And again, the, of course, the most important thing is the kid got some bumps and bruises. Flew out of like a Tilton world and got bumps and bruises and he got blessed. Um, but we were worried about our liability, that we would be walking into something. But there was no ability for us to miss that because we set up no regulations where standard of care could not be deviated.
Well, that's uh, that's my answer.
If I could jump in, because we talked about this, but years ago, and this is a criminal statute, but the law had been changed with carnivals um because there were, that required the carnival to list all of their staff members and verify that they're not on child sex offenders lists because of abuses that took place in certain carnivals that I was aware of.
Sure.
So that's why the law was changed there. And I don't know who verifies that or you do.
Background checks on everyone.
So you get the list of all the carnies that are gonna be working that, okay. Okay, that's a verification, huh?
And the carnies have changed, there's different, the old time carnies are retiring, which is a real big thing because they knew how the rides operated. It was a real thing, like they knew what to lever switch to pull and stuff like that. So it's important, you bring that up, yeah.
No, it was, it was carnies that were helping to put children in seats and putting seat belts on and appropriately touching, so that's why.
While we're on that, can we extend that to vendors, vendors at all? Because I, all vendors, all staff, all?
Uh, we, of course, uh, listen, that's be very, one, I've got a six-year-old, it's the first thing I think about when I go wake up in the morning, last thing I think about before I go to bed is safety. Um, and then the building Hampshire's legal. The uh but, but no, but I'm very serious now. There are different regulations that come into this. The state of Illinois, I don't mean to castigate Springfield every time I come in here, but the state of Illinois has taken steps about that, from a con, and I just want to make sure that if we do go down our path, which is the path if you ask us to go down, we will, we do it the right way and we're not the punching bag for the ACLU or another civil rights organization because we missed step and we put, we overregulated on that field because if someone's accusing something and they are not, if someone's accusing something and they are acquitted, they are innocent, right? And that's, so if you want us to go down that path, that's fine. But I want to tread carefully and make sure it's on the right.
Look into whether or not we have the authority.
Yeah, or what scope of authority we have.
Okay, I only ask because in light of a recent news report where we allegedly had a vendor who has been now charged with a crime at his own place of business. Um, we all know what
Even that vendor here?
Yeah.
Because the ice cream guy at the end is from Indiana, that wasn't him.
Yeah, I, I saw it online too and I never got it cleared as to if it was that person, but in that situation, he he wasn't charged until after the event. So the other thing, just to kind of, when it comes to crafts and vendors, I mean, some of those are coming in two days before the event.
Right, but he was charged, maybe there was an investigation going on and a background check might have found that.
Yeah, because that's not subject to freedom of information if it's this investigation.
We'll lay out in a memorandum what we can do, what we can't do, and we'll give a spectrum of aggressive to conservative. And and we'll lay it out and just, everybody wants to make sure the kids are safe, right? I mean, it's paramount.
But then you think about street dance and everything, every single person that's at a booth then, I mean, that includes our chamber people, our library people, et cetera. If they're doing a, that kind of, it's a vendor booth, so.
Well, odds are, we're probably, based on the way that the law is written in Illinois, we're probably not gonna be able to do it anyway because we're not so, like, but it's good for us to have an exercise to learn about what we can do and what we can't do, right? And there's gotta be some compromise in the middle, maybe, and maybe we'll all be able to lay our heads down, go at night, knowing what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. So I don't disagree that it's worth investigating.
Understood. Thank you very much.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Um, age seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Four dash seven dash one definitions. Why are we excluding jukebox? Just curious. Sorry, I just want to know, like, why were those included?
I just don't think they existed.
Well, no, they are, but they're touch tune devices and
So they don't use colts? Is that why?
No, I don't, I don't. I think if anything, we need to update this. What was that thing?
The phonograph. I think it was a phonograph. Or a track tapes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 there was an ordinance or whatever that we were talking about, it was intercoms or something like this, and and Jimmy was really into the phonograph.
Yeah, some people have, some people like vinyl.
I do.
Yeah.
Can we look and see what current, like, what a current ordinance would look like for jukeboxes and if we can have the right to enforce it?
Yeah, absolutely. I love jukeboxes.
Yeah, I was just curious. It's the only thing that got changed in my children.
I'm not picking on you. I would like to add for the record, the current president of the Hampshire School Organization does apply for a permit for the raffle for bingo.
Understood.
You said that.
No, I'm saying, I just want to put that on.
Churches too.
But you better, I'm glad, make sure you reference the time so that you don't get in trouble for sticking up for the president. Okay, number one. Number two, number two, the uh, like fifty-fifty raffles that happen at basketball games and stuff like that, that that's what I was talking about. Like usually the athletic events and stuff like that. The big one for bingo and like big events, oh, and they do. But there's, there's raffles happening all over this town, we're not enforcing it, which I'm not saying that we need to.
Agreed.
I'm just saying that it's happening all over here.
So I do have one, a different section from carnival I'd like to discuss. Um, I get when we're cleaning up ordinances from like eighty-five or eighty-nine, but we just did the mobile food or the food vendor, uh food truck ordinance in twenty-twenty, so it's five years old. And there's four sections being struck from that ordinance. The first one is that sales from a mobile food vendor may be made on any public property, including but not limited to public parking lot or public park or open space subject to prior rule from village manager. So that's been taken out, the fact that they have to have insurance is taken out, the revocation of a of a license is taken out and exemptions is cleaned out. Why, why are we making these changes to something that's only five years old?
Is that covered in another ordinance?
No, I'm trying to find it.
Sorry, it's, it's page twenty-five of the
They don't have to have insurance.
Attachment.
No, the iPad.
Of the iPad, page twenty-five of that section, the attachment section.
Well, they have to show us proof, insurance to get it.
But this struck that out.
It shouldn't though.
I don't.
That wasn't a change that we talked about.
And it also struck out that they should be permitted to sell food between the hours of seven AM and ten PM.
No, I'm not in favor of Indian end. Unless it's covered in, unless this is specifically covered for the, in the, yeah, no, this is the twenty-twenty ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, we can revisit then, you know, undo the change here.
No, we specifically did the food trucking. But I don't remember talking about that. I'm sure that was just a scrupulous name.
Well, it's a lot of scrupulous.
No, I don't. I understand that. I understand that.
Just out of curiosity, because Hampshire Social has the, you know, the trucks all the time. Is, and I've never commented on, is that a hundred and fifty feet from Copper Barrel?
So they can't have uh food trucks anymore ever since they started serving food because they themselves are a restaurant.
Okay.
And and double, and Double R actually, I think Double R opened before they um started serving food, but Double R would have been there, closer to them. So between Double R and then them agreeing to start selling their own food, they can't have food trucks anymore.
Okay, okay.
So that problem of food trucks on State Street kind of resolved itself.
But a food truck could come in and ask for a license and be in like the parking lot over near the railroad tracks or a public parking lot on their own, like they don't have to provide a business.
They could, if they, if they chose, if they chose to, if the Cape chose to do that, yeah, they could.
Okay.
Or like if you operated a food truck and wanted to set up somewhere else, you could come in and obtain a permit as long as you weren't within that hundred and fifty foot.
Okay. Okay.
Or if you had, like, as we talked last week about the temporary use of that property, right? Um, that's private property. So they could be there as long as they're not violating any other zoning ordinances or that kind of thing. Or if you wanted a food truck on your, like you were having a big party and you wanted it to back onto your driveway type deal, as long as they were licensed and everything, they're not on a public street.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Thank you.
So if you are having a party, we like tacos. Anyway, um, thank you for that discussion. This isn't up for a vote, so we don't need to table it, I apologize. Uh, but thank you and you guys for your merchant orders.
Understood.
Next, we have uh staff reports, we have police reports, streets report, please review them at this time. I would like to point out that the, there is some new data that we've never seen before, which is kind of cool, and the police report. So I was hoping that Chief could talk a little bit about that section.
I do.
Unless you wanted to cover about something else.
No, I could, well, there's, I mean, there's a couple of things, but yeah, I'll talk about that new data first. So, um given that portion, I've given you the traffic crash data for a long time, speed trailer data samples. Um, I'm not gonna put these in every presentation. Uh, I put this in, unless you want to see something specific, I won't. Um, but I just wanted to show you the kind of data that the new speed trailer that you paid um twenty thousand dollars for is collecting. Um, yeah, you, you seen it out as also as a message board too, so it's, we've actually been getting quite a bit of use out of it. Um, but what it, what it gives us is traffic study information for, um, you know, for vehicle counts going through the area plus also um like this particular report that I've um, that I took some screenshots of and put up here. Um, it, it really gives us a good idea of the time of day um and the speeds that we're seeing, you know, that the, the speed trailer is detecting and then the point of that is then for us to then replace that speed trailer with a squad car, you know, when, at the appropriate time. So it allows us to tailor our resources to when the complaints really are, you know, because sometimes we get complaints about, hey, you know, this cars come through here, you know, uh, in the morning when the buses are out there, every day they're going sixty miles an hour and then it turns out, no, they're really not, you know, and and so, so then, but then we can focus on when that time, when that problem is actually happening and put it, you know, put actual enforcement out there. Um, so that's why I put that slide. Any questions about that one or about capabilities?
This might be a six-day span.
What's that?
August.
Um, and I can do as, as many, as much of a span as I want to do. Those are just the reports that I pulled up. I think that was a seven-day.
I had to say of that one, it was from August eighth to the fourteen.
Yeah.
The, one of the interesting things, one, it looks like that sign makes everybody go close to the speed limit, which is great to see. But just for anybody watching this and for our community, if you think Hampshire's a small town, which we are, going northbound in six days on State Street was eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-four cars.
Surprised by that myself, yeah.
That's a huge number.
I just drive.
That's just northbound. That's not both.
Yeah, I go that way a lot.
I did see Justin Verner just jumping back and forth. She's like, I swear I run faster than this.
She, she borrowed uh Mr. Vasselli's barbecue.
But that, I mean, that's a, like, on a
On a car.
But it is, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Um, may I ask how we're supposed to tell what the speed limit is on these reports?
Well, that's why I, it's, it's really, it's a report for us. That's why I I put it in there just to show what the
Isn't, aren't all streets twenty-five?
There, there's
There's a few that are thirty.
They're, they're all thirty, actually. It's just twenty, State's twenty-five, but everything else is thirty.
Except for
Oh, I mean, Alan.
A couple of days of this when school is back in session, then it drops down.
Yeah, and actually the speed trailer um adjusts for that, so we, we can program it however we want. So we program it for the school zone and then once the, you know, once the, the end of the school day comes in, it defaults back to the, to the speed limit that it falls. Um, and what else are they gonna say about this? It's about, it's about it unless you really have any questions. We also, there's a, there's a limit on it, so it, so it won't reflect, we can set a, a, a top speed for it to reflect the speed, so you don't have people trying to hit triple digits or something just for fun. It won't show anything over.
How do we test that?
Well. There's been some people who test. It does take photos. Um, the, the speed trailer's license plate reader capable, but I don't have that function right now. Um, you might see that coming in a, in a subsequent budget year. Um, but the uh, it, it does take photos of the egregious violations, um, but it's it's pretty unusable because it's, it's not really set up for that. That, that's why we don't know license plate.
So every time I drive past, I drag these silver Taurus.
Well, I think, I think when we talked about it, right, the, the purpose was inform and deter.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and for us to be able to, to see, is there really a problem? And, and then put, to put proper enforcement out there, you know, when you know the problems happen.
You know, the other thing, looking at those dates, only one of those days, I think, one or two was when school was back in session. So that eleven thousand six hundred is before.
School started twelve.
There's also two of those days outside of that. I mean, I don't know how much those two days have added, but when you add school back into that too on State Street, a lot of you.
Dropping off the campus.
Yep.
So um, the next slide is, is this professional standards overview, and this is really just a um, um, an effort of transparency um for us to, to put this in the report. And what it shows you is the data that we're collecting and then um, the, you know, how, how we're like the frequency, the numbers of things that we're seeing. So you can see that there's compliments, complaints, awards, use of force, vehicle pursuit, uh, pursuit conduct and um, wellness. Um, and so we've got about almost a year worth of data in there right now, so I, I thought it'd be a good time to put this forward and say, this is, you know, this is where we're at. So like for complaints, um, you know, the, this represents, I think it's one, two, three, four, five, six complaints over twelve months. And we're, we actually track all complaints. So any, you know, if someone picks up, picks up a phone and says, you know, they have, they have a complaint about an officer, or if they have a complaint about our organization as a whole, um, if, if they have a complaint about me, we track all of them. You know, so um, so we really have very few complaints and I, and I don't know the exact number, actually I, sorry, it was six, seven, because we did have two in September of last year. Um, but the, I can drill down and see, you know, what officers are generating those complaints. So I can see if there's any problems that we know that we need to address. And I mean, really with a small department, it's pretty easy to know what the problems are that we need to address, but it does, it, it, it is good for reporting and transparency and, and just to get an overall view of kind of what we're doing, where we're at when it comes to these, these issues. So any questions about that?
Where do you guys keep track of the elected official complaints, like the ones about us?
That would be the village manager, I think, that would be taking care of it. Both.
Mark.
Those are flag.
Right, I thought that was just done by.
A question about the colors because we're having trouble distinguishing between the foot pursuit and the use of force. We looked at it digitally and on the paper and I still can't tell.
I can tell on the computer when I look at it.
Holy smokes.
It is pretty.
Only foot pursuits.
Pulled it over.
There can't be a whole lot of those.
They are, yes. I don't think, I don't think, um, in November we had, we had ones. But it is pretty hard to tell the, the colors.
Do you only log these if someone calls it in or like?
Yep.
Let's say I walk up to Officer Duran Mo and, on the street and, hey, you're doing a great job. That doesn't count.
If, I, I, the information has to get to me, so.
It's got to get to you.
You know, yeah, I mean, it's got to get to, well, it's me or Lieutenant Nublocker. And, and as far as, now, we do tell the officers, any complaint, that they, they're required by policy to bring that forward. We don't have that same policy for compliments, but we do, but they are, they are required to bring complaints.
Okay.
And I would say, and we've talked about it before, but the, the body cameras have really made a big difference on this because we've had several complaints that have come in, unless we even offered to sit down with the officer and watch the video, or not, I'm sorry, with the complainant and watch the video, um, that we have heard several complaints, just because then it's when they know that it's recorded, they're like, yeah, you know what, I'm, I don't need to talk to you anymore. So it's, it really, that's kind of sad, but it's good, it's good for the officers. And it's good for the, for the people too that are coming in, you know, so if, I mean, it's.
So the people are sending compliments?
Yep. And I, you know, I like, maybe on their employee files and and we track everything in, in um, frontline too. This is, I showed that demo with frontline, um, my last report and that's, this is some of the data that it's generating, so. Um, is that, was that, did you have a question about something else, Mr. President?
No, sure. Mr. Chief.
Yes. Um, I just want to say, you know, we had, we had a great um, response to this last weekend's incident with um, Pingree Grove and Gilbert's in Kane County. Um, they were with us the entire night after that, so they came in at about eleven thirty when the incident happened and um, and, and those agencies all helped us out throughout the entire night. Um, you know, with, with uh, two or three officers out there, we're quick, we can be quickly overwhelmed and it was a, it was a pretty big deal. And so they were there the entire night to help us out and then um, the task force um, sent in some detectives that helped us with, you know, with interviews during the evening. And so it was, it was really good to see um, you know, that law enforcement community come together to, to support and, and and we, and we returned that favor. I've actually got a thank you letter from uh, Chris Harris for something that we helped with them, them with last. So the um, and I share, when, when those things come out, you know, when something like that happens and, and I mean, I pray that it never happens again. Um, but I'm, I'm going to put out the information that um, I'm legally allowed to. There's a lot of information, like the details of an incident like that, the, really the um, the only authority that has that should be releasing information and details of what happened would be um, the state's attorney's offices, they see appropriate. And then um, the name, like the name of the victim in this particular case or, or any other really should come from the coroner's office, not from me. Um, and, and of course I want to give time for family to um, you know, to, to, to not just notify, you know, the immediate family. That was done while we were still on the scene. But then we've got, you know, we want to make sure that they have time then to notify their family and that, so it will be at least a, a couple of days before any of the, of information is ever released. Um, so. Yep. So then definitely had an impact on the entire community. Yeah. Um, I leave accreditation, I'm just touched on that, I'll be done. Um, so, and I, uh, yeah, I I, I miss, second guess myself for a second on the word I used. Um, the accreditation process, so what we've been working on for the past several months is making sure that our policies are completely um, up to date, completely in compliance with um, state, local, federal law and, and best practices. Um, we, we use Lexipol, which helps us dramatically with that. But then um, what we're doing right now is we're subjecting ourselves to um, the accreditation process through, through the Illinois Chiefs, which is called ILEAP. And what, what they're, what we're expected to do to attain that accreditation is, is um, you know, not only make sure that the policies themselves are, are up to date, but then we link um, the policies to the accreditation standards and then we actually are required to um, provide proof um, for each, there's sixty-nine standards and um, we're required to provide proof that we're actually following each one of those sixty-nine standards. So um, it's been a little bit of a project um, for Lieutenant Nevlock to get to the point that we're at, but right now we're collecting proofs. And so we should be able to um, to go for an onsite inspection within another month or so. Um, it does, it does take some time. It's um, it's, it's just, it's, it's a good thing and it, it's good for us to to show that we're, you know, that we have good policies and that we're following our own policies. Um, and it does help when it comes for, um, I, I think the state's actually going to require all police departments to be accredited within a, within a matter of a couple of years, so we're continuing to have that too. Um, and um, that's, that's all I really want to talk about. So if anybody else has any questions about the presentation, um, please, uh, please let me know.
I don't have a question about the presentation, but a couple of meetings ago, you had in your presentation and shared that there were classes available for elected officials to deal with, like emergency management or um, incident response in a class that I forget what they were. Could you email?
Yeah.
Not tonight, but when you get a chance, email those classes in case anybody's interested, because I never.
Uh, no, I didn't, and I apologize for that. I will, um, let me talk to Dave Schmidt. Uh, I'll get something else here in the next several days, but I want to talk to Dave Schmidt. He's very on top of uh, emergency management planning and, and those sorts of classes. And so we'll talk, let me talk to him and figure out which ones would be the best and we'll send you that information.
I know you had said it'd be, they'd be useful and even in our position, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And the same thought exercises too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Chief, I have a question. Is it possible to, for, um, because we do the reports, et cetera, to do a focused um, study of a particular neighborhood or block that um, the number of calls coming in and out and the number of times those officers have to be out there?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'd like to talk to you about that after the meeting that, about that.
For sure.
There was a lot of talk during Coon Creek of some issues that have risen and I no idea. And now I just, I see burglary, et cetera, and things here, so that's why.
So the, um, yeah, the, those burglaries are um, connected to, in, in one area that, that showed up on this one. And um, you know, I, I I can tell you that the, I, I know what you're talking about and the um, and the management of of that property or those properties is actively addressing it too.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it's not, it's, it's a team effort.
Okay. If we could, I mean, because I, that kind of hit me from left field, but I sat for four days at a table and everybody kept coming up, so.
Yeah.
If, if you know the, the area that I'm looking for, I'd, I'd love to be able to, to see some kind of focus. I mean, and I don't know how far back you could go, just kind of to see if it's progressing or it's gotten worse, or it's just a recent surge because of summer. So.
I would say it's a recent surge because of a couple of people. Honestly, it's, it's so, if, if that problem gets alleviated, it'll, it'll significantly.
Was somebody arrested in Coon Creek in the parking lot? I, I, somebody said, and if I didn't see it, that's why I'm asking, but somebody said that there was a warrant out for somebody and they were arrested by Pingree Grove in the parking lot, like in Coon Creek.
Yeah, that happened.
Okay.
Maybe just tell me about it.
Okay. And maybe it's not because it's a festival and there's a lot going on and we have police in the parking lot, so, okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Any other questions about the police report or street report? Okay, next we have the accounts payable personnel and we don't have any, so I'll entertain a motion to table that indefinitely.
Second.
Questions, comments? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Next, we have the regular accounts payable in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Any questions?
B E I, no, I'm just.
I wanted to know about the earplug landmarks.
Right, yeah.
Probably earplugs for.
Thanks.
Oh, page that. Oh, are you, are you weighing it?
Yeah.
Now I gotta find it. Page one. What, what does?
Last line. Oh, sorry, earplug gas can.
Care, yeah.
I just want to know this.
Earplug gas.
Where do you find it?
There's, there's. Oh, okay, because.
Slash.
It's a flash and that, I was very confused and also scared. Um, who bought that? Hampshire.
Street report. Yeah, they bought earplugs and the gas can.
It's actually, it's actually the sewer department. And the reason I ask is because every other thing is on its own line, so. So only thing that shares a line, and I just didn't know what that would be. So we make frequent trips to Napa.
Yes.
Exactly. And um, so if something comes out in the same invoice, it gets, it's a flash or a comma versus like, it could be like, you know, like somebody's in a truck and it needs wiper blades, they go to Napa. And then somebody else is somewhere and they need a gas can and they go to, so, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was two items.
It is two separate.
Not one.
Can I ask about page thirteen? It looks like Management Impact Solutions LLC Recruiting Advertisers, was that for Village Manager?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that uh, account been now closed since we've?
I believe that's it.
I'm not sure.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
But I believe so, but I'm trying to, I, I, I think that we only got invoiced one time.
Okay.
Off time, sorry.
No.
But if you see them again, it's.
Okay. That's a big number.
Yeah, it was large. But they did all of the background checks, they did all the screening and so I feel like we didn't lose out on that deal.
No.
Considering the one time we tried to do it well. Does anyone else have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the uh, regular accounts payable in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Both.
These was clear.
Scotter, aye. St. Gerro, aye. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Spell, spell street, aye. And Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
What information would you like to drop on us, Mr. Mr. Kelly about BDC?
So BDC met on the thirteenth. Um, we started off with a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, they're going to start joining us quarterly to let us know what's going on, what's important to the chamber. One of the things that uh, the executive director shared was a survey that the chamber had done with its members of things that they would like to see in the Hampshire or services or what's going well, what's not going well. So she shared that information. Um, and that led to the next discussion, which was for the BDC to reissue another resident survey. I don't know. Some of you may remember, was it like six years ago?
Yeah, the Survey Monkey.
We did a, a survey to all the residents to say, what kind of businesses would you like to see in town? What kind of restaurants? What?
Superdor.
What's missing? And uh, I don't disagree with you on that.
Everybody's, everybody's a superdor.
Uh, and so we're looking to, uh, the BDC is looking to send that out again. Um, the uh, the survey is being reviewed by the BDC to see, okay, do we need to update it? Are there different questions? There was a, a good thought presented of what if we just resend the same survey and looked at change over time, since we have a lot more residents and what were the numbers before and what are the numbers now? And is it consistent that they keep wanting this type of thing? Because as you look at that type of number, that could be good data for businesses looking to come here to say, hey, this is that need over five, six, seven years that our residents have said that they want. There is a market here for that type of service. So there's a really great discussion on that. Um, more to come there.
Would it, just because of, if it was an ice cream shop and we now have one, would, would the numbers be skewed because people say, oh, we don't, that's not something I want because we already have.
Right, but that may be a good data point. If they wanted one, we got one, now that's not as high.
Okay. Okay.
Um, or it may say, you know, we still want, I think, what was it that was brought up? Bakery? Like, we may, may still get a lot of people say, I'd love to have a bakery, right? Because we don't have. Uh, so those different types of questions. Uh, we did not go through the facade um, projects or applications. Uh, Mr. Schwalwell was uh, was not able to make the meeting, so we just tabled that until the next meeting. Um, we did discuss that there's potentially a couple of applications coming in for this facade program. So this board will probably get those, I would guess, in a month and a half uh, after the BDC meets again to be able to make a recommendation. Um, and then we got some updates on new and existing businesses and different things that were going on with developments. One of the big discussions that wasn't on the agenda, but it ended up coming up was um, the need to have an updated uh, plan. Sorry, remind me. And uh, how that is truly foundational to a lot of the strategic decisions and recommendations the BDC would give that the board would consider. So there's discussion around, would the BDC consider different funding mechanisms for this? Should we not? Because CMAT doesn't do the grants anymore. Would the BDC recommend different funding mechanisms or look at reallocating traditional funding towards something like a comprehensive plan? So the next steps on that is um, the chairman's going to meet with uh, President Reed, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board Chair. And just to talk about amongst the three organizations or the three committees, uh, what does that possibly look like? What could the funding mechanism be? What should be considered before it gets to the, the budget committee going into next year? Because those can run about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You want them done. Uh, Mr. Con, is it every ten years updated?
Fifteen, twenty.
And we're at twenty-five years?
Yeah.
That's for like established community that are growing as fast as.
Right. So imagine Hampshire twenty-five years ago, and that's the last comprehensive plan for Hampshire that we had. Uh, we're not having it updated has bit us in the butt. Uh, we now have a solar farm going in, as we don't know, off of Big Timber and Forty-Seven. And part of what the county says is, well, you don't have an updated comprehensive plan, you have no plan for that space. A similar solar farm was going into Elgin and the county voted it down. And so I'm not saying that's the reason, but that was one of the reasons they gave why they voted it down. So it is important, those are the next steps, but that was a pretty big discussion. Um, and then the, the BDC would make a. Um, and then the, the B D C would make a, a formal recommendation towards potential funding that they could influence to help go towards that.
County voted? Then one down?
Yeah.
Elgin voted it down.
No, county voted the Elgin one down.
Did Elgin have a plan for this?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so.
I'm following you now.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the county was very clear in a lot of the conversations that we've had leading up to and now since his past that it was, it was viewed that we as a village did not have a plan. So how could we express opinion about a land that we didn't, an area that we didn't have more plans for? So, I mean, it's just, that could be county speak for, we're gonna do what we want and doesn't matter what you think. But it very well could be, I mean, we've referenced not having an up-to-date comprehensive plan several, several times in, in the more recent history. And so, you know, as we talk about future boards and that kind of stuff, you know, I think it's, I think it's time that we figure out a way to make that priority.
And it sets the different areas, right? We're gonna have, I'm, I'm off on this, twenty-five hundred homes still to be built.
We know, we know right off the top of our head that.
That are already in planned communities to be built that are growing rapidly.
Yeah.
We have areas that we know that we've discussed should this be a retail area or a second downtown area for more of those remote communities. So that comprehensive plan will help to define what those goals are and what we would like to do. Uh, so it is a very important thing. Um, the last thing that came up, and I don't, oh, correct me or help me out with where this came up in the discussion, but I think it was during the conference plane, we're talking about the new uh, development going off of seventy-two, the potential new development off of seventy-two, the homes.
Super property.
Uh, and the front of that is supposed to be a commercial. And one of the things the B D C talked about is, and I don't know if it'll be a formal recommendation or ask is that, um, with going into these development negotiations and these development agreements to put in a timeline for that commercial property upfront that after the first house is built, there has to be within an X number of years, that commercial property has to be developed as well. Otherwise we end up with just undeveloped property at the front and all they care about is building the houses in the back. And so the B D C was talking a little bit about that. I don't know if there will be an official recommendation or ask for consideration in the development agreement. Uh, but that was an interesting discussion. Oh, anything that I missed on that?
Nope.
Anything from the meeting I missed? Okay. Any questions for B D C?
Given new to add for the budget?
Oh, yes. Uh, is that the next thing on the agenda? I'm sorry, I'm going back to the agenda. So I was on the B D C agenda. Uh, Budget Committee, I just wanna, um, so for the Budget Committee members, one of the things that I would like for us to start to do is we give a lot of money in our budget to nonprofit organizations locally towards different things. So we give it to Concrete Days, the Historical Society, the Chamber of Commerce, SUDS and Fund Car Show, like there's a couple of different major events that we donate to and sponsor. And I thought it would be good for us to meet with them after they've done their things or at a mid-year or six-month review, just to say, how did they go? What did the funds go towards? What are the financials looking like? Because every year they're gonna keep coming back for funds as they have. And rather than just cutting a check and waiting till the next request, I thought that it's part of our responsibilities, the Budget Committee, to meet with these organizations and just to continue that relationship to understand how was the money spent? Where is it helping out? So that when our residents ask, well, you gave X amount of money to this organization, what do they do with it? We're not sitting here like, I have no idea. So, um, I'll send an email out to the, the Budget Committee members just to find a date in the future, probably not till like October, November timeframe. And we would invite them to come. It'd be one night, we'd give everybody a chance on their own to come and talk to us and what are you thinking about for next year already and stuff like that? But just to keep those relationships. Any concerns by the board or by the Budget Committee for us to do this?
I think that's great.
Okay. That's all in for the Budget Committee.
Any new business or other announcements?
I can ask about the progress of the census.
Well, that was part of the announcement, actually.
Okay.
I did mine. So we don't know what the progress is.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna start regular meetings here shortly, but it was just, it started to hit mailboxes. Last week or two weeks ago, and then last week I got another one. I, of course, filled it out right away online. So the thing is, is that this is legitimate for anybody that's watching. You do, you are encouraged to fill it out online because otherwise somebody's gonna come knock on your door. So, I mean, that's just the way that this village has spent, what, three hundred thousand or so to have this done? Because of the amount of growth the community has, uh, experienced. Um, it's a way for the village to um, capitalize on some of the growth because otherwise we'd have to wait till the next census. So, um, we're gonna, we're gonna start having regular meetings and stuff. So what we, as it, as it was with the last census, we don't get the information back. So, but we're gonna get it and that day, like I said, they're hiring people and they're gonna start knocking on doors and so, and staff has diligently worked with, the census team and, uh, uh, social media posting and that kind of stuff. So anything that any one of the board members can do, please encourage people to fill out the census.
It is very easy to do.
It is. They do that in five minutes.
Five.
Yep. And then the following week they get another one.
Yep.
Just keep filling them out.
No, that they.
I was changing the information.
They continue to send them, you know, it's like a mass, they don't pull you off. They don't pull you off. I didn't do mine because I wanted to see what would happen and, and so I could. I will now.
They're, they're gonna come back on your door.
Well, I mean, that's part of it. I wanted to see how long it would take or, you know, but as you're saying, is they're gonna send them anyway. There's no census. I'm not lying though, because everything is online and, you know, Q, Q R codes and everything else. What about the seniors? I mean, at that point then they just have to wait till someone knocks at their door?
Well, yeah, they don't.
Don't have computers.
QR code. Just use type in the website.
Okay.
You type in the code that is in your paper and it sends you right to it. You do it, submit it, five minutes, done.
There are seniors that don't have it. My parents don't have a computer. They don't have, et cetera. So that's why I use them as an example.
But somebody will.
Somebody, somebody will come in.
Okay.
Uh, no soliciting sign or not.
Do you have something on my house and I will do it?
You can do it on a cell phone.
Yeah, my parents don't have a cell phone and, I mean, honestly, there are some people that don't have these things that we just kind of assume that everybody does. You know, so.
They'll go door to door.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they'll go door to door and it won't matter if you have a no soliciting sign or not because they're allowed to knock on your door.
Good. Okay, yes, uh, school started. Welcome back to all the kids and I'd like to give a compliment while you're here.
Record this.
No, I, I have heard, uh, being in the line of work that I do as an educator, I have heard some schools that are not gonna name names or schools, but have recently taken on S R Os at their school. And the officers are not as involved with the students as I as an educator would like to see. Um, they kind of just hang back, watch around where somewhere street closed with their weapon on their side. That can be a little alarming for some of the kids. So my compliment goes to Officer Paradise for all that he does at H E S. Um, I, I'm saying like that H E S because my own kids go there. He is at that, at drop off every day, making sure that building is safe. He is checking those doors to make sure they are locked and nobody is getting in that building during the school day. But more importantly, he's engaging with those kids. He's in classrooms reading books with them, doing math with them, playing games with them. They love that man there. My kids love him. Every time they see him, hello, Officer Paradise, they love him. He's doing great work for the community. He's instilling a positive view of the police force in these kids, which is what we need. So.
He's done a bang of time for, uh, Park District this summer.
Yes.
On all the vandalism, he was able to squash it like a, a day.
I mean, I will add a note to that. We walk every day and he will still wave at my husband across the street. He acknowledges that he has our kids and he's like.
Yep. He's.
Every single day.
His priority is those kids and that those kids are safe and.
Well, it's your point, positive per perception of the police. I mean, those kids run up to him to go say hi.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a guy that should be recognized by the village.
So.
Well, and as a fellow educator, I will tell you that relationship building is one of the best tools to use to control behavior issues. It's not a threat of punishment. It's I already have a relationship with you and I care about you, but you know I care about you. And you care what I mean. So just being able to say, I was expecting you to be doing this. Hey, let's have a talk, you know, and then.
And when you feel safe, you are able to learn and do what you're in school for. So thank you to Officer Paradise.
I'm thinking that's.
You're recording. Yes. Good job.
Anybody else?
Uh, I will say thank you to whoever picked up the phone or made calls. A couple of days ago, I saw three comment trucks out at our sign and in that property. And I don't know if they're running power to the sign.
We're still missing a pole, but they ran, they ran the meter.
But they were, they were digging and running and stuff.
It's like when you run an extension cord and it's just that much too short, that's where we're at right now.
It's a step in the right direction.
It's like we need Clark Griswold to show.
We're not on year two. It's great.
Somebody turn this.
Yeah, that's what it is. They got a pole in yet?
No, no, and then we had all the storms and our pole got given away. Well.
Well.
They're all over place. When you need a bike.
I mean, we have to have a separate power pole like.
I don't know. I don't, it's just.
No, no, it's all underground. I got, I got a hundred foot extension.
Service for the government agencies got way less as soon as we had to. So, um, so Mary Jo will be starting with us on September eighth. She, that's, that's her start date. Um, we're going to have an official like swearing in. We've never done this before, but she asked because she said her family wants to see her sworn in into her next career. So the first meeting in October, I believe, is what we'll do, her official swearing in.
But she will officially be working.
Yeah, but she, we, we don't, we don't have to, it's not, it's ceremony.
Ceremony.
Because it's just state statute that we don't have to swear.
Oh, how long is Mr. Hedges staying on to transition?
Till now, he'll be with us till the end of September. Uh, like, and he's, again, he's said from the beginning that he would stay longer if the transition takes that long. He said he'd go.
I just didn't know if you guys discussed a date of.
So the thought process, the thought process is that, um, he would stay until the end of September and then he would move. That's, that's the thought process now. But so there'd be, you know, a, about two or three weeks of overlap, kind of like what we were thinking. So. But, uh, he said very, he's not going anywhere. So, I mean, we can lean on him if we choose to or, you know, we could probably convince him to help us out since then. Um, this year's, we're gonna start getting out, I hope. I, I haven't talked to, uh, Ms. Tuler about it. We did settle on a date, but we're gonna try to get it out early this year. Uh, for the lit holiday parade that we do every year. Uh, we're gonna do uh, December twelfth, which is a Friday night this year, uh, as opposed to a Saturday night. Because, uh, I gotta be honest, I'm tired of hearing about how we block, uh, for every parade that we do in town that we block people from trying to get to church. So like, at Coon Creek, we get yelled at for blocking people because they park and they can't get to church or leave church. And then every year we've done this parade on a Saturday night, which is consequently what Mass is over there and that's where we do all the staging. So we're gonna try to do Friday night, do something a little bit different. We'll start at six. That's the plan for now. We'll see, right? We said six or six-thirty?
We were staging.
Are we partnering with the chamber and everybody to actually go back to where we do the, the activities downtown and setting up downtown or is it just a parade?
Just a parade.
On that note, uh, we need to consider making the parade a little longer. The biggest complaint and why the parade floats have dropped off is because it's, it's four minutes. Four minutes. So you spend two hours decorating your vehicle or like the fire department decorates everything.
Can't drive any slower.
Four minutes.
Well, you've gotten, you've gotten slower since you started.
So the, the board should consider making it a little bit longer.
Well, the problem is, is that we've kind of done this parade route on purpose so that we can secure it. And because we don't like all the other stories from all the other towns and things not being safe. So, I mean, we can look at it, but we've really kind of leaned into this model so that we can stage equipment, buy equipment, stage, you know, so that we have an actual plan for all first responders and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, it's not something that we can't talk about, but I, I know that we leaned really, really hard into this for safety's sake and.
Two or three more blocks is gonna really throw it out of the way?
Well, you said that, so, so I guess to that same question, you said that you're done in four minutes. So four minutes and thirty seconds is gonna. Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing with.
I don't know how many people around the board were privy to the parade route and the shortening it, but I don't think there's many here nor in the public that like the shortness of the route.
It was the sta, it was the staff that worked on that and it was the Coon Creek parade that it's been placed forever and ever. And actually I think what we did is made it longer for them. What we did is, it was, it was all born out of the premise of they were going down to Williger and causing traffic backups at the end because that's where Coon Creek used to be. And then they moved uptown here. And so, but they still kept their parade route the same. And so they kept going down to Tru Williger where no one was. You know, and so that's where, that's why the parade route changed for Coon Creek.
Well, it crossed the detour.
Right.
So, so it was just a big bottleneck over there.
So that's where that, that landed because of Coon Creek Parade wasn't safe. And so then we decided as policy for like staff and then by recommendation of the first responders, both the fire department and police.
The fire department, like, were, were the biggest complainers of the four-minute deal. They wanted to know why we were going out down Jake, down Tusk, out to Tuscany. Well, why are we going down Jake?
That was, again, it was based on first responders. It wasn't anything that we, that wasn't just like us beating the drum, saying, hey, we need to make this short for everybody to inconvenience them. It was just a matter of us trying to. Yeah, everybody says it's never gonna happen in your town, right? It's not gonna happen here. Like where you get the people that are driving through parades or trying to hurt people and stuff like that. And so like, it was more born out of the conversation of if we have a standard route, we could fortify it best we could, stage people, close roads down. And this way it was always the same. And so we could prepare for that budget wise with equipment and all that kind of stuff. So that's where that, that's where it came.
The, the first one that I was in was, um, and I, I don't know if we had one prior to that, et cetera, but it was the Holiday Missed Total.
Yeah, you followed us. You were in the sweeper or something and trustee Kelly and I were freezing on the trailer.
But it, but it.
We were collecting food for the food pantry.
Yeah.
But nobody, I mean, it wasn't set for throwing candy. So people, the kids are not on the sides so much. It's cold, so they weren't family. What was so neat about it was we went all over the town. We were in Lakewood. We were, I mean, by the high school, we were everywhere. And people came out because they knew we were coming and they had fire pits at the end of their driveways. They were hot chocolate and, you know, so were some people that just stood in the house because it was too cold. But it wasn't a parade route where you were having to deal with safety. Oh, safety is always an issue. Um, but because people aren't running into the street, it was just a matter of watching to see the lighted cars. So.
I know, it was a lot of fun. It started, it started during COVID, they, over the birthday parades and stuff, but then it kind, and then it kind of, uh, morphed.
Well, they, to your point though, they were throwing candy at those. We, we went out for every parade and a few cars were thrown.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, cause you couldn't see it, it was.
I, I know. It's a little frightening when you have a three and four-year-old.
Right. Yeah. And that's why, I mean, that should be clear. It's not for parades. It's just to enjoy it, to see Santa, you know, coming on his sleigh. And I mean, I mean.
I know the one year we did get complaints, um, the first year I did it, we got complaints from the people down here because we were gone so long.
Yeah.
And I even got a phone call from the village manager telling me, um, bring them back. Those people are leaving.
Uh huh. Well, we told, there was a communication issue with the staff that was supposed to light the tree when the crowd was getting ugly.
And it's, you could start with the tree and then continue to.
There was direction there that said, if the crowd is turning on you, light the damn tree.
Didn't get that memo.
Anyway.
That message didn't reach me.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't.
It didn't go much further than out of my mouth when I said it. So I guess, anyway. Yeah, well, it's not something that we can't look into. We've got some time. We're not releasing the route tomorrow, but I do want to start putting the date out there so that, because last year, again, to your point, trustee Co, people didn't sign up because we gave them less than a month. And all these people had already confirmed other things. And so, and then we were competing with other towns. So I just wanted to be first. And so we're gonna put it out there that it's first and then we can talk about, we can talk about routes and stuff like that.
Is it a charity?
No, a charity.
We're gonna get right out.
The draft is ready.
Great.
Do we have a tree?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
But I'm sure, but it, but I, we do have a couple of people that have asked if they could uh, donate their tree.
Okay.
Um, December twelfth, oh, and Coon Creek was, everybody had fun. And so I want to thank everybody, especially the staff, police. And so I want to thank everybody, especially the staff, police, first responders, help works. The staff behind the scenes, right, that are giving up their time or waiting on staff that are out there helping to, then their deadlines get pushed in there. And then it would be remiss if we didn't send our condolences out to the Kerski family for what they've endured this week. I, I, I don't know what to say about this tragedy, other than it is something that no family should ever have to face. And so, for that, I'm truly sorry and I hope that they find peace over time as best they can. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we don't have the executive session today, so. All favor?